Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight.
One moment.
You're not started?
I have to get it on.
Okay.
Okay.
Ready?
You are live.
Very good. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. The first order of business is the pledge. And I wanted to ask Chief Napolitano if he would like to have the honor tonight of leading us in the pledge.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance
Bye.
to the flag
to the republic
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God
indivisible
with liberty and justice
Thank you very much. Okay, so the first order of business tonight is the public hearing for the draft of CB 11's capital and expense budget for fiscal year 2023. So this is the public hearing portion. If there is anyone here tonight from the public, not the board, who has comments on the expense and/or expense budget recommendations, now is the time to please speak up. Do we have anyone who's interested in making any comments?
You have no raised hands.
No one. Okay, so then we're going to close out the public hearing. A motion? Janet just gave me a motion. Jeffrey seconded. All in favor? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Moving on to the public portion of the meeting. We have here tonight Chief Napolitano, if he would like to say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for extending the invite. I am here as a representative to Chief Royce for the Transportation Bureau. We oversee the traffic agents and the traffic issues throughout the city of New York. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for joining us tonight.
My pleasure.
Besides the captain, who else do we have here from the public? I think Nancy Lulu was here earlier.
Yeah, but I have no hands raised. So if everyone who would like to address the board would use the raise hand function, we will recognize you. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well. One moment, please. Okay, so I'd like to start off by extending best wishes and greetings on behalf of District Attorney Eric Gonzalez. The District Attorney is very active and committed in protecting Brooklyn communities. The DA and staff have been out in communities across Brooklyn, participating in various events. Just a couple of announcements about the DA's offices work and events. On October 10th, 2021, the late Brooklyn District Attorney Ken Thompson was honored with a co-naming of a downtown street on his fifth anniversary of his passing. A stretch of J Street between the Brooklyn DA's office and the Brooklyn Supreme Court is now officially known as Kenneth P. Thompson Way. Thompson was the first African-American DA in Brooklyn and put in he put in place transformative reform and radical changes to the criminal justice system. Also, as well, Brooklyn District Attorney Eric Gonzalez announced yesterday on October 13th that a Brooklyn man has been arraigned on an indictment in which he is charged with manslaughter, criminally negligent homicide, and other charges for striking and killing a six-year-old child as she crossed the street in Dyker Heights. The defendant allegedly recklessly drove into oncoming traffic to get around a vehicle that was in front of him and ended up striking and killing an innocent child. We will now seek to hold him accountable for his actions. The Brooklyn District Attorney's Office is committed to protecting pedestrians and all who use our streets from unsafe drivers who endanger our community. Um, also, the Brooklyn DA's office will be hosting a Hispanic Heritage Month celebration on October 19th at 1:30 at the Tillery Hotel at 85 Flatbush Extension. Special performances by the NYPD La Hora Band. RSVP is required. To RSVP, please visit communityaffairs@brooklynda.org. Or you could reserve by calling 718-250-3888. Please come and join us. And finally, as always, if there is a matter, an issue you would like to address with our office, you could feel free to call the Action Center at 718-250-2340. And that's really it. I just want to thank the board for all the work they do, and it's great to see everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. I believe Frank Fantana from DOB has his hand up.
Yes, Frank, you're right.
Hi, good evening. I have two quick announcements. There's a homeowners assistance program, which was just approved about a month ago, which really pertains to one or two family homes. So it really reduces the financial burden of one or two family homes if they do get some kind of a violation. So according to the program now, any of those homes that have not received a violation in the past five years do get a violation during an inspection, we are now allowing you to fix those problems. Whatever the violation is, the issue is, we're allowing you to fix that problem and avoiding the associated penalties that come along with it. In addition to the program, we used to always have the Cure Program as well. So any of those homeowners that fall homeowners that fall out of the one of the five years that have not received a violation, let's say have a violation on their property. The Cure Program actually used to be 40 days, now we're extending to 60 days. So if you do fix the issue within 60 days and certify corrected, we will waive those associated penalties. And then lastly, whenever a new homeowner does buy a we will mail out a notice to their property information about helpful tips about hiring an architect, projects, inspections, timelines, things like that, so they become a little more familiar with the the building's process in case they have to do any work on their property. And then secondly is the code revision. The City Council just passed approved the updated building code, so about 600 changes. There's a lot of information there, but I'll put the link in the chat so you can pull up the revision fee self. You see some of the highlights. One of those being the basement apartments changing the ceiling height, maybe try to be those basement apartments a little more accessible to build. So I'll put that link in the chat if you can take a look at any questions. I'll be on the call. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. I believe Nancy Tong also had her hand up. Nancy, are you there?
Nancy?
Nancy, did you want to speak?
Do you hear her, Nancy? Does she hear you?
Is that Assemblyman Colton?
Yes, it is. We're having a little trouble. We just reopened our office after four days of repairs and some of the emails, and I think there may be a problem with the link. So I guess you can hear me, but I don't think you can see me.
No, we can't see you, but we can hear you. Would you like to take this time now to speak?
All right, basically, we've had, we've been doing some surveys, getting complaints from a lot of constituents regarding sewer flooding from Ida. And we're probably going to try to see if we can, you know, get a list of catch basins that are very clogged up. We've submitted some to DEP already. One by St. Francis Cabrini Church, which had a lot of flooding, was absolutely filled to the brim with water and debris a week after Ida. So, you know, I think that needs to be addressed, and we'll also be submitting other lists of catch basins where there's been problems. So, you know, that is something if anyone has issues on, they certainly can contact us. The status of the homeless shelter is pretty much on hold right now. We did have another Zoom meeting. There may be another public meeting scheduled sometime in November. We haven't set the date yet. But there have been a lot of garbage around the homeless shelter, and the fence is also in very poor condition. So we will probably be contacting the building department on that and seeing if, you know, we can get some kind of enforcement because of some of the dangers, some of the fences actually peeling apart. Or you actually have holes in it that someone could stick a hand in. And there has been a lot of dumping onto the site. I have heard that in the last few days, the owner might have had some trucks cleaning it up, however. So I'm going to go back there and take another look to see if that has been cleaned up or not. But, you know, that basically is where we're at. We're just reopening our office after being closed for four days. We had six inches of water in our basement, and the floor had to be replaced in the main office and painting and so forth renovation. So it was closed from Friday to yesterday. And today, basically, we are, you know, open for the first day in a week. And that's why our computers are a little bit, because all the computers were disassembled and all the phones were removed from the office, and they were just reassembled today. So we have a few bugs in them still, but we're working on that. But that basically is it. Again, I want to thank the planning board for all that you have done in, you know, bringing good information to the community. And I want to thank Captain Chen for the good work the police have been doing. We did go to the Bay Parkway Merchants last week with two NCO officers from the 62. And we were checking mainly on flooding problems. There was a lot of flooding there. But we were also checking on, you know, public safety issues. And I will tell you, there's a lot less complaints when we went than we've heard, you know, in the past. You know, in terms of shoplifting, in terms of, you know, public nuisance where somebody comes in and harasses the customers. So I think, you know, I want to thank the 62 and the NCO officers and Captain Chen because I think that there's been a lot of progress made in terms of, you know, communicating with the merchants and, you know, dealing with, you know, these kinds of issues that they were facing. Dr. Law was involved with that, also with CASS. And that's basically about it, you know. We are proceeding, and CB 11 is doing a great job, and, you know, so we will continue. And CB 11 obviously is continuing. So thank you.
Thank you, Assemblyman. We also have with us Hannah Wienerman from Congressman Nadler's office. Hannah, are you there?
Yes. Hi, good evening. Very quickly, so Congressman Nadler is standing with the president around the two bills, the bipartisan infrastructure bill and the reconciliation package. So when those pass, I will happily come back and share with you about the different elements of those bills that might affect CB 11. So if you have any questions in the interim, feel free to email me, but I'm happy to give a report back. I just wanted to flag that a lot of constituents have been reaching out around the SBA loans. The idle loans have been expanded. There's new opportunities for people to apply. So if you're having any issues with the idle process, getting in touch with the SBA, or have any questions about applying for the loans themselves, you can feel free to contact our office. Our number is 212-367-7350. And I'm happy to leave my email in the chat. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Hannah. We also have with us Captain Chen from the 62. Captain Chen, would you like to say a few words tonight?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Laurie. Thank you, Marnie. Great to see everyone here again on Zoom. First, I want to introduce the man on my left-hand side. It's Captain Jared Badeo, the new executive officer of the 62nd precinct. So it'll be his first time here to show up to the community board meetings. And just, you know, if you want to get his face, you know, so you guys could be familiar with his face.
Hi, nice to see all of you guys. Looking forward to meeting everybody face-to-face. I'd like to have a chance. I've been here a little bit over a month and a half, and I oversee the traffic the traffic program as well as the domestic violence program. Look forward to speaking with you guys.
And we're also happy to have Captain Badeo on board. And like he said, you know, he's in charge of the traffic, domestic violence, and also our special operation, you know, he's also had a hand in there. And before I go on, I want to make apologize for the inconvenience that we have. On 19th Avenue, there's an active investigation regarding the incident that happened last night. So 19th Avenue is still closed right now between 78th Street to 83rd. And then 79th Street was also closed from 18th Avenue to 19th Avenue. You know, we foresee this being opened up very soon. So just for the meantime, I apologize for the inconvenience to the public. I also want to thank two little girls, Sophia and Victoria, for their generosity for bringing Krispy Kreme donuts to the 62 precinct yesterday. It's very, very nice of them. Even though it's a little bit crishé to say all cops like donuts. They said they didn't mean it like that. It's just, you know, they happened to get donuts. That's their donation. But hey, listen, I enjoy it. You know, I had a donut myself, so it was very delicious. But again, you know, I thank them for their donation and their support for, you know, NYPD. And we gave them a nice tour of the precinct, so. And I believe Victoria says she would level one to be in the juvie room. So I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing, right? Anyway, another announcement I want to make, it's the committee council meeting next Tuesday. We're going to try to have it as a hybrid meeting. We'll do it in person. Also, we have the Zoom link. We'll send out the Zoom link. So if you could join us in person, you can meet us at U.S. Central, the Federation, we can meet in person. Otherwise, you could still join us. We have the Zoom link, so we're going to be doing hybrids. So we're doing we will answer questions we assume, but we'll also be presenting our cup of the month award there. And I'll have all my NCO officers there and since there is a few new faces there, so I wish I want to bring them along to meet with the community as well.
Thank you, Captain. Very nice. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak tonight? Only public? Anyone? Going once, going twice? All right, last call. Okay, so at this time, I would like to have someone have a motion to close the public portion of the meeting. Sal just made a motion. Eileen just seconded. All in favor? Okay, moving on. The next is the minutes from September 9th meeting. Marnie had sent them out to everyone, so I hope everyone had a chance to review them. Are there any edits or comments on those draft minutes? Okay, here and done with. Someone like to make a motion to accept the minutes from September? Sonia's making a motion. Do I have a second? Janet? Okay, all in favor accepting the minutes from September 9th? Okay. Okay, moving on. Now it's time for the disposition of the public hearing, which was about our capital and expense budget recommendations for 2023. So I hope the board had a chance to review that. Is there any comments, edits, any discussion about capital or expense budget that was proposed? No comments, so it seems that everyone is fine with the way it's already been presented. So would someone like to make a motion to accept the capital expense budget for 2023? Vincent just made a motion. Do we have a second?
I do.
Okay, man Y is making a second. Are we all in favor? Are there any abstentions? Any nays? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next is the chairman's report. So actually, it's the chairwoman because Bill's not here tonight. I'm sure everyone noticed that, right? Unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight, so I am filling in for him as vice. Early voting starts on October 23rd and goes through October 31st. You can find your early polling site by visiting the website On this website, you could also find information about your actual election day, November 2nd poll site. Last month, the Planning and Zoning Committee met to discuss the Open Restaurant Text Amendment, which would make permanent the emergency open restaurant program during the pandemic. Ross is here. Did Ross want to speak on it also? I mean, no? Okay. The committee did reject this application due to the lack of public review since the application was referred out in July when the board is on recess. Everyone knows we don't meet in July and August. And there were many concerns relating to the removal of zoning regulations and locational criteria, removal of clear path requirements on our restricted streets, especially underneath the elevated structures like 86th Street, for example. The lack of simultaneous rulemaking process, the lack of design criteria on an enforcement component. So therefore, the committee is recommending to the board that CB 11 rejects this application for those reasons. Did anyone have any questions or comments about it or anything to discuss about that?
Laurie, I mean, this is actually this question. I mean, not like we have already objected to it, but I mean, not like they're not going to get it anyway.
Right. I mean, that's a valid point, but it's just a matter of us expressing our concerns, especially with 86th Street and under the L and what it creates and other problems that it would create for us in CB 11.
Now, let me just ask you one other question. With that text amendment, now, assuming during the wintertime, they all have to come down, or is it just left as a permanent open position?
As far as I know, it's going to be permanent, permanent. Marnie, I didn't hear them taking them down because it's winter. They're going to keep them up. They had them up last winter, too. Some of them had heat inside and everything. So it's like
Yeah, hi. So I just wanted to say as far as the the ones on the sidewalk, especially if there's plenty of room on the sidewalk, I think, I mean, for the most part, a lot of people are okay with that. I think the bigger issue is the ones on the street which take up parking spaces, especially there are many I've seen on Bay Parkway and 86th Street, which nobody's been using them. They may have used them a year ago during the pandemic, but nobody want to eat inside now. They're just dead space. In fact, there are some that I've heard, I'm not sure if it's in our district, but people are actually stores I've seen are just using them as free storage space. And it's basically just killing parking spaces. There's, you're allowed to eat indoors now. There's really no reason for it. And like you said, a lot of them are fully enclosed, so it doesn't even get you whatever the pandemic, you know, was supposed to be to have the open air. So I think if we could just point out, even though like the other gentleman said, it's going to pass anyway, no matter what we say, but but I think that if the board could just just strongly mention that even if it does pass, at the very least, they should have to, the restaurants should have to show that they're being used regularly. For example, like we said, in the winter, if it's closed off for months, there's no reason we should kill those parking spaces. You know, if a store is not being used, they should have to close. So at the very least, if they're going to be allowed to stay there, it should have to, they should, stores should have to show that it's regularly being used, or they should have to come down.
That's an excellent point. Excellent point.
I will point out, the mayor, the mayor claims that he told his staff that that should be insured by. I don't see any enforcement mechanism of that whatsoever. So, you know, if there's a way that City Hall could really enforce that, that would be great. I mean, we know how bad traffic and parking is in our neighborhoods anyway, and no reason to make that worse. Thank you.
Good point. Anyone else have any comments about this? So would someone like to make a motion to accept the committee's recommendation? I'm sorry, did somebody else have their hands up? Because I don't have everyone showing on my screen. Jeffrey, did you have your hand up? Jeffrey, did you have your hands up, or was that an accident?
There we go. Okay, I got now. Yes, I also wanted to add to that, that the fixtures or structures that are in the parking area are very dangerous. There was a couple of them that got wiped out because of accidents because of the way these drivers have been driving. And fortunately, one of them got wiped out off hours, so there was no injuries incurred. But I mean, they're actually, half of them are jutting out further than what they're supposed to. And they take up practically, some of them take up the whole block. The whole, you know, the whole street that's off the sidewalk. So that's another concern, and there's no, there's no enforcement regarding the size and and the, in addition to the use and everything else for that. And it's also going to be all year round from what it was. They had a thing regarding heat, depending on what type of heat, you had to get certain permits and this and that. So it's supposed to be all year round. Now, who wants to eat out in the snow? I have no idea. And that's another concern is snow days. How are the plows going to come down and plow the streets with these structures in the middle of the in the street? So that's another concern.
Good point. Good point, thinking about winter.
That's right. That's, you know, and the way our seasons are going, you know, we can have snow in April, you know, April, May. So that's another concern there, too. And if you go like 86th Street, which is under the L, very hard to plow on the parking area. So you put these structures on that area, there's no plowing. You know, that's another concern over there in areas like that. So, you know, it's a big, big thing, you know, and I don't believe that the city honchos are thinking ahead. They don't, they don't, you know, off the top of their heads. They just say, okay, let's start with it. Now that the restaurants are back and forth and it's indoor dining, I don't believe there is a reason to have outdoor dining in those, in those facilities, to be honest with you.
Good point, Jeffrey. Thank you.
No problem.
So at this point, would someone like to make a motion to
Marnie, as I just mentioned, I actually just emailed you some pictures I took of empty sheds right in our district. I don't know if that's helpful. We can submit it when we hopefully pass to reject this proposal.
Okay. Sounds good. Did someone want to make a motion and have those added comments added into our recommendation that why?
A motion? Adopt the committee's report as well as the comments from Reuben and Jeffrey. Thank you.
Gotcha. All in favor?
I think Sonia here, I just want to say that some people have even said they've seen the homeless sleeping in there overnight in those unused restaurant
Right.
additions out in the street.
So I was asking for a vote. Everyone in favor? Are there any nays? Are there any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Marnie, are you on? I can hear you. Okay. All right, and then just one last thing, and then Marnie could do her report. We are participating in the Daffodil Project. It's the largest volunteer effort in New York City history and live in memorial in remembrance of the victims of 9/11. We are planning to plant over 900 bulbs along the border of Garibaldi Playground on 18th Avenue. It's between 82nd and 83rd Streets on Saturday, October 23rd, between 11:00 AM and 2:00 PM. So if anyone is interested in helping out planting some bulbs that day, please let Marnie know. Okay? Thank you. At this point, our district manager's report?
Thank you, Laurie. I just want to start off by saying that last month's meeting, we had invited Commissioner Sapienzo, one of his representatives. I just want to start off by saying at last month's meeting, we had invited Commissioner Sapienzo, one of his representatives, to, to attend this evening's meeting to address some of the ongoing sewer issues and sewer odors and discharges. And unfortunately, we didn't get a response, so I just wanted to put that out there and let the board know. And I know there were some people who were attending the public portion that I don't know why they didn't speak, but there were some concerns regarding terrible sewer odors in the vicinity of Bath Avenue, Bay Sixteenth Street that remain unresolved. So we are working on that and trying to get a short term, term fix until they can determine what capital projects, if any, are needed there. So we'll keep the board up to date and the public as well. I just want to share that the Department of Transportation has begun preliminary work on the reconstruction of the seventeenth and twenty-seventh Avenue pedestrian bridges over the Belt Parkway. Twenty-seventh Avenue is in Board eleven, but you may see all that work in the staging there. We'll be holding a joint virtual transportation committee meeting with the Community Board thirteen on October twenty-first at six thirty P M., where DOT will be making a project presentation. All are welcome to attend or view the live stream on Facebook dot com slash Brooklyn C B eleven, or you can go to our website. W W W dot Brooklyn C B eleven dot org, and you can register right there. The link is up on the website. We look forward to everybody participating. We also received a request from a Southern Brooklyn resident that the board consider supporting a percent for art projects associated with the bridge reconstruction project, whether it be for educational murals or painting of the cement barriers there, which look horrible, in my opinion. We have such a beautiful waterfront, and we look at cement. Let me just explain what the program is. In nineteen eighty-two, the New York City's percent for art law requires that one percent of the budget for eligible city-funded construction projects be spent on public artwork. So it's managed by the Department of Cultural Affairs and the Program Commissions, hundreds of site-specific projects and variety of media, whether it's paint, lighting, mosaic, glass, et cetera. They're integrated into the infrastructure and the surrounding area. So they're requesting a letter of support, and I think it may be wonderful if we can get that, but, but I wanted to put it before the board.
Does anybody want to make a motion to?
I had a, I had a question about it before we proceed.
Yeah.
It doesn't cost the board or the community or anybody related to us any money, right?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, the budget.
I'm sorry. Monty, were you saying something?
Oh, yeah, no, as part of the city budget, one percent of the budget is allocated to this program, so it's already in place.
I just wanted that, like, yeah, reiterated, like,
Yes.
Put it down. Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments about this proposal? Okay, so would someone like to make a motion to support this proposal? Lorraine made a motion, a second by, anybody want to second? Jeffrey seconding. We have all in favor? Are there any nays? I, I think Ross is having a lag. Any abstentions? Okay, good. So moved.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here. An emergency permit was issued to the Department of Environmental Protections contractor to make emergency sewer repairs on Twentieth Avenue between Bath Avenue and eighty-sixth Street. You may have seen a lot of staging and work going on there. According to the permits, they'll be replacing the collapsed sewer that may require twenty-four hour pumping. The permits are valid from October, I believe it was sixth through November fifteenth. Work will take place Monday through Friday, nine to four on Saturday, eight to four. The board may recall, it's nice and smooth now, but that location was previously identified as a trench restoration. For those that don't know, many, many, many moons ago, one of the city's contractors installed sewers using what they call this trench method and wooden boards were put on the side. And then the sewers were installed. Many of those trenches, the wood is now collapsing. So you see that roadway, the hummocks and, and the cavins. So while DOT did a fixed job to make it safe for people to travel, the sewer has now collapsed. So emergency repairs and we're still advocating for full trench, trench replacement and reconstruction at that location. I just want to give a couple of sanitation updates. With the suspension of curbside composting in the district, the Department of Sanitation will be making two seasonal collection for leaves and turning them into compost. So you can set out your leaves curbside and paper lawn and leaf bags or online bins after four P M. On Saturday, November twentieth and December fourth. And I would just like to ask, as, as all the leaves will be, begin to fall, if you're a property owner that lives near a catch basin, please, please, while it's the law to clean eighteen inches into the street, if you could just make sure that's clear, it would help with, with rainstorms and flooding in the area. In addition, the department begins their winter schedule known as night plow. This allows the department to have pre-scheduled staff to respond to snow and ice conditions. When it's not snowing, the scheduled workers are assigned collection duties. So the winner this year to have night collection is section one, which runs from Fourteenth Avenue to Bay Parkway, sixty-first to sixty-fifth. And then we weave from Bay Parkway to McDonald's from sixty-first to sixty-fifth street. So you will not see your garbage or recycling picked up during the day. It'll be left out. Don't worry, they didn't miss you. They will be there. And that's it. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Monty. We're moving on to new business. Anyone from the board have any new business to bring up? Claudio, I thought you had something earlier. Okay.
Laurie, this is Sonia.
Hi, Sonia.
Hi. I just want to mention that one of the neighbors told me that her neighbor saw someone taking a package from somebody's stoop, taking the contents out and then closing the box again as if thought had just been delivered. So please be aware that this is what's going on right now. This is something new. And also, another neighbor asked me, why are the corner sidewalks being done again?
Well, first of the, the, the thing stealing the packages is like really not new. The porch pirates has been going on for some time now. It's just that certain blocks probably haven't gotten hit as much as others, but it's been going in Bay Ridge, Dyker Heights, Bensonhurst, Bath Beach. It's been going on for like at least two years now.
I know, but, but my, my, my point was that they're taking this stuff out now and just leaving the boxes if they're nothing. That, that's new to me. I've not seen that yet. I've seen them just take the box completely.
They have done that in the past. That's not
Okay, that's news to me.
Monty, did you want to talk about the curbs?
Oh, sure. Sonia, can you just give me a little bit more information?
I think she's talking about how they do with the new handicap accessible where they're red.
Oh, so the city is required to, to make the corners A D A accessible, and that includes visual for the visual impaired. And so you're seeing new designs and, and it's a requirement by law.
Thank you.
Did anyone else have new business?
Hello, Laurie?
Yes.
Can I make a short announcement?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Colton and Conley Island Hospital set out a food shop station at our center. One twenty-four Avenue O. This is food shop, it's a free, no money involved, okay? October nineteenth, Tuesday, eleven A M. to one thirty P M. The other one is October thirtieth, Saturday, eleven A M. to two P M. Anybody in there, food shop, please come, okay? No money, okay? You don't have to pay anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else who had new business they wanted to bring up? Jeffrey?
Yes, I have two concerns. One is the fact that the bicycle riding on the sidewalk is getting out of hand. I'm in the, in the, in the other end of Bensonhurst in the sixties. And there's people left and right on, on the sidewalk riding bikes. I got clipped once with the handlebars, all right? My wife had a, has a, a hip replacement, and if she gets hit and goes down again, there's going to be serious consequences. There, there's no enforcement. They ride, you tell them, it's like you have two heads. Something's got to be done. Eighteenth Avenue and all the side streets, they get right up on the sidewalk. And a lot of them have the e-bike, the electric, the electric bikes, and you don't even hear them. Second issue is there's no traffic enforcement agents coming into the area to ticket these cars that park in the crosswalks. They all block the cutouts. They, they cover the crosswalks. You can't cross. And the handicap people with, say, rollators or, or the wheelchairs can't go up and down the ramps. And none of them get ticketed, and they do this left and right all the time. That's just, that's a service, you know, A D A problem.
I don't know, did Captain Chen want to address that in any way? Because I know he's talked about it before with the bikes. He's mentioned that at the last meeting.
Jeff, Jeff, Jeffrey, you were mentioning that it's offered by the, the other side, the other end of the freezing, right? The east end of the freezing with it by the sixty streets, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm actually, I'm actually on sixty-sixth street between Twentieth and Twenty-first. But we go down to Eighteenth Avenue, go down to Bay Parkway, and they're all, the bikes, they don't care. They actually go, they, they run into you to get onto the sidewalk. That's how bad they are.
No, no, I understand. Yeah, it's, it's frustrating. Yeah, the sidewalk's ready for possession to walk. And then when there's no, you know, I understand there's no biking there, though. That's, that's one issue. So, you know, sometimes the, I'm not making excuse for them, but that's when there's no binding. People like tend to jump onto the sidewalk, but then that's, that's going to be an issue because when the bike hits the pedestrian, it's going to be, it's going to, someone's going to get hurt, too. So that's something I'll have to address. And then we're probably going to try to work with DOT to identify the issue and see if we could work on the binding over there. Because right now, currently, we had the binding on Bath Avenue, and then yeah, I don't know, that, that seems to work out pretty good over here. Yeah, so
You know, I, I, I'm an avid bike rider myself, so I know what it is. But I can ride in the streets. I can't see why these, these young people can't ride in the streets. They got to ride on the sidewalk. It's, it's amazing. I'm in my seventies and I ride in the street. You know, it's, it's ridiculous. It really is.
I hear you. We'll probably, you know, Captain Beddial here is kind of, you know, spearheaded, and we're probably going to try to do some education initiative there first, you know, to, to educate the people and know it's, you know, safe to ride in the street. But obviously, you're going to need the motorists to cooperate also, right? For, for people to ride on the street safely. But then, yeah, then we must do some initiative on that side. The second issue you have is blocking for crosswalks. Again, you know, I'm going to ask you anytime you see some, I ask everyone here on, on this meeting, and anytime you see some violation, please call three one one. And if you could, you know, include a picture in there as well. So, you know, we could, the officer is going to go over there to adjust the issue. We recently just have, you know, on every tour, we try to have a dedicated three one one auto that two officers that's dedicated to answer those three one one jobs. So, you know, if you see a violation, people blocking a crosswalk, blocking a hydrant, or, you know, double park, whatever, blocking a driveway, right, call three one one, include a picture of the, with the violation, you know, that way it's actually going to help us, you know, when we go over there, we identify which vehicle is the, the one that's violated the law. And then as far as traffic agent, you know, that's something we'll talk to our counterpart on the chief of transportation.
Yes.
We'll see you about, about. Yes, yes, chief.
I can, I can speak to you after offline, after the meeting. Maybe we could set up some joint operation. We could dedicate some traffic agents as well.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Thank you. Angelo had his hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted, you know, to piggyback on what, on what Jeffrey said about the bike riding on the sidewalks. We have the same issue on Bay Ridge Parkway here by me between fifteenth and sixteenth Avenue. And I mean, does the city have any sort of placard or something that they can put out, or is there something that can be distributed? Because I mean, it's getting to the point where now it's, it's at the point where I'm going to get into a physical confrontation with somebody. I mean, they have no fear, even with me walking the dog, and this dog is someone, you know, I wouldn't mess with my dog. But they just, it, it turns into a standoff every single time because I refuse to budge from the sidewalk when these folks coming down the street with the bicycles. So is there anything out there that exists that can be posted or somehow to put this, put the word out on us?
Yeah, again, it's something that I said, I'm going to, we're going to start like an educational initiative. And we'll put out some pamphlet, you know, pamphlets. And then we'll talk to Transportation Department, you know, see if there's any signs we could put up there and then and then, you know, just tell people, hey, right, right on street. And if they could make some like bike links, you know, if there's more people riding bikes, probably they will see, all right, there's, you know, there's a need to make a binding on certain streets.
Right. And, and I got to believe this is a citywide issue. And I'm sure in those areas where they introduce those stupid scooters like up in the Bronx, they haven't, they're having the same issue. In addition to the bicycles, they probably also have the scooters that are on the sidewalk at all times. So there's got to be something in the works.
Yeah, the scooters, the e-bikes, that's another thing, you know. We actually trying to, we're going to have another initiative, you know, addressing the e-bikes, the, the motorized scooter and the dirt bikes, you know, thank goodness, we don't really have too many of those here in, in the six, too. But that's another initiative we're going to have. We actually have been doing it, those initiatives like every weekend now. And then we're getting some success on that, but hopefully, but I believe, you know, we, we need to really educate people. A lot of time, you know, that's what comes down to, you know, because just, you know, we can't just keep going out there and keep hammering people with summons, but eventually, you know, hopefully, some education as well, you know, that we could get, get that work. And then obviously, you know, maybe some, some cooperation from DOT, we could get some signs up, too.
Thank you, Captain. Thank you, Angelo. I, yeah, Monty is sort of frozen, which you were saying outreach and education is so important. Revan, you have your hands up? You can unmute.
Yeah, hi. Yeah, okay. Thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to point out as far as the scooters, I think the issue is, I'm I happen to be a reporter in my day job, and I've spoken to some elected officials. I think the issue is that a lot of these are little kids who are too young to ride in the street. So like, I mean, you, I mean, adults will generally ride in the street, but the little kids, so I mean, they're, you know, seven or eight years old, they're, they're too young to ride in the street. And you know, it used to be when they were just riding bicycles, the kids that young were riding them that Hello?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, somebody's talking?
No, no, that was an accident. Somebody unmuted by accident.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, so I was saying that generally when those kids are about five, six, seven years old, riding the sidewalk, when it was the bicycles, they don't usually ride that quickly. So it wasn't such an issue, but but now with these electric scooters, the little kids can ride as fast as the adults. I know some of them are adults, but I find that for the most part, the ones riding to the side are the kids. I think I'm not trying to, you know, say one way or the other. I think the issue is that, that, you know, obviously on the sidewalk is dangerous, but on the street, the six-year-old kids can't ride in the street either. So I think, I think that's really where the, where the problem is.
Thank you, then. Maybe this is something that the Transportation Committee should take up and put on their agenda as they're having a meeting soon to discuss. Robert, did you have something, new business?
Yeah, well, remember when they came and they pitched the electric bike and all those e-scooters? We said to them back then that this was going to be a problem. Now it's just gotten like a hundred times worse. You know, I understand the thing about not putting them on the sidewalks to protect people, but you also got to make sure that they're legally doing but you also got to make sure that they're legally doing it out on the street because they're going to cause accidents. And of course, the bikes and the e-bikes and the e-scooters, they'll never get blamed for it. They're always going to blame whoever it is, never mind, never mind what it is. But yeah, I would absolutely say that, you know what, we need to address this, uh, a- as a cause. Education, you know, some type of enforcement too, if that's truly what has to happen.
All right. So let's take it to committee. Does anybody else have any new business? Okay, what about old business? Does anybody have any old business that they'd like to discuss? Nothing? Okay, so guess what time it is? Who wants to make that motion to adjourn? Ma'am Y wants to make the motion. Sonia is seconding. I think we, everyone is in favor. Everyone have a wonderful night. We'll see you next morning. Thank you so much for joining. Andrew, you guys have ended the meeting because Monty's frozen. Good night.
Nighty night. Good meeting.
Good night.
Leave tight, Sonia. Don't let the bedbugs bite.